All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the Tuesday, August 27th, Timneth Town Council Work Session to order. Ms. Peters-Garcia, please take the role.
Yes. Excuse me. Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Proten Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
All right. Four out of five are present. Councilmember Lake advised that she was running late, but should be here to join us. So when she arrives, we will make note of that. But we are here this evening to discuss one item, the facilities master plan. So Director Stone and Engineer Smith, I assume this is your show?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Take it away. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, it's our pleasure to present to you this evening initial findings of our facilities master plan project. This is the culmination of literally months of hard work of our consultant Gensler and Associates and staff. I'd like to thank all the department heads and Aaron for their diligent participation in this effort. They sat through lots of boring meetings with me, so I appreciate that. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Kelly Floyd of Gensler and Associates, and she'll walk you through the presentation.
All right. Actually, why don't we pause for a moment? Councilmember Lake, record reflect is now present. You missed the calling of the role. All right. Thank you. Take it away.
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me? It's on? Yeah, okay. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Kelly Floyd. As Earl mentioned, I've had the pleasure of working with your department leaders for the town for the last few months to develop what we're going to share with you all today, which is a couple of different scenarios that could address your needs for a facility master plan for the next 10 years. I am a design strategist with Denver's, with Gensler's Denver office. My associate and colleague Nick Segley, who's also been working on this, was not able to join us tonight. But the two of us have been pulling this together with Earl's help and some others. So we'll just dive right in. I'm going to walk a little bit through, where should I point? You got it? I can just say slide if we need to. Or no, I've advanced too far. Okay. Okay. So during our time together, what we're going to do today is review our findings from the study, share some of the challenges we think that you all are going to encounter that need to be solved for over the next decade, and then present some solutions that solve these challenges holistically. The outcome of this process will be a schedule of projects, sequence to proactively plan for the department and human resource needs of the town in a timely manner. So I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce you to the project, if you're not already familiar, and sort of the five-month process as context. In April, we were hired to help lead the process. And over the, over the last six months, we have been helping, oh, excuse me, over the last two years, just for your awareness, we have been helping several surrounding municipalities understand their space needs, including Weld and Adams County. With new working modes and work-from-home policies, several of our clients have found that they have more space than they need, and that leads to more overhead than what is needed. In your all's case, what we've learned is that Timmeth is actually going in a different direction, given your rapid population growth. We worked with department leaders to collect data through several methods, including surveys, interviews, and workshops, which gave us an understanding of your current state of facilities and some of the changes coming. As well as our internal analytics team at Gensler used data modeling to project population and staffing growth metrics. From this data, we analyze the opportunities and develop the scenarios we're going to review today. As presented, as we presented key findings to the leadership team in mid-June, and we'd like to share, I'd like to share a few of those data sets we found that were most relevant with you today. I keep saying "we" because I thought Nick was going to be standing next to me, and now my script is outdated. As we synthesize the data we collected, what we learned were there are four themes that emerged that we felt were most important, that needed to be considered, and the solutions developed. First, an understanding, first, understanding the estimated growth of population requiring services. Based on ESRI data, which is what we use as a national statistical data group, we anticipate that the town is going to grow by 119% over the next 10 years, which is going to equate to an additional 4,780 households, which adds an additional 13,320 residents. The services that these residents will continue to look for will be cultural events, access to parks, trails, and open spaces, and community building events where residents can meet and engage with their neighbors. As those additional residents move to Timmeth, additional employees will be needed to provide external services and internal administrative functions. Department leaders predicted an increase in 75 full-time employees over the next 10 years, based on what they know now. The highest growth that we're seeing will be, will be those required to manage and maintain the park system and recruit and hire new employees by, if you looked at percentage of growth of each of those departments. Based on government, years of government planning experience and research, Gensler has found that one full-time employee to every 100 residents is a balanced equation and adequate to meet municipal needs. Timmeth will be within this range at roughly one FTE for every 93 residents if the growth that is predicted to happen does occur at the rate currently. When looking at town facilities and the workspaces associated with these, with these needs, we did find that Timmeth facilities currently have a higher usable square foot metric than other government systems. Usable square feet is space dedicated to individual work, collaboration, and circulation. These are spaces that can be altered or renovated to create new layouts for work, is how we define that. We do not include specialty spaces, which this is, this is a room we would consider a specialty space that has a very distinct need in that metric. And we also don't include mechanical spaces or restrooms that have fixtures that can't easily be, be removed or remodeled. As you can see, the town's facilities are currently in an average of 440 USF, usable square feet per person. The police department's utilization rate will come down as additional employees are hired that are providing administrative and facility-based functions. And Goodman will also come down as employees continue to be hired for parks programming. As we have worked with several municipalities in the western region, well-planned and programmed government facilities typically have between a 200 and 225 USF metric. So one of the factors right now to the high USF that you all have is because of the town hall's design provides limitations on how space can be used with some of the exterior design choices that were made. And ways that we can improve this USF metric for this building specifically is by choosing things like compact furniture systems that could be installed to condense space, as well as renovating for conference room layout. They're both strategies that could help improve that utilization rate for this building specifically. So what does all this information lead to? Once we look at data and we analyze it, we come up with what we call guiding principles. And these are really statements that act as decision-making filters for evaluating different scenarios. And in this case, we had eight of them. Five scenarios, as part of the process, were presented to help both improve space utilization, meet headcount demand, and address some of the department adjacencies needed to improve productivity and efficiency of flow of information and work. These were presented to department leaders for evaluation and were scored by those department leaders to understand which of those scenarios, of the five scenarios originally created floated to the top. Of these five, three emerged and were further studied through cost estimation. So I'm going to walk you through each of the scenarios now. I know you have seen some of this information already. Just to give you sort of, just to walk you through it from where we said, just so you maybe understand a little bit more the thinking behind each. If it's okay, I would like to go through all three, and then we can stop and pause and ask any questions so that you have an understanding of each of, each of the three compared to each other versus looking at them in a vacuum singularly. Okay. So with scenario one, our goal here was really to reframe the center, what we would call the center of town, right, to a space that was more about public engagement rather than asking the town hall to continue to act as that space, as well as your administrative space. One of the reasons that we do this is just to give a building a true personality and a true purpose. And if we, we start to bring people to more of a public engagement space where they know that they're going to be welcomed, it's more community-focused, it'll bring maybe a little, it'll take down some of the pressure on this building to be so many things. So we started to do that by moving the administrative functions of public works and parks and the community development team, who we know they work closely with, to that new facility. In this case, we are calling it out as the new Parks and Recs facility because we know that that is a conversation on the table and because we can build in the workspace needed for all of these teams if we're planning ahead. And so we're labeling that as sort of the umbrella, but know that this could be any type of space that you want it to be. It's just the one we've chosen to sort of frame the conversation as, as context. So once the community development team has vacated this building, then renovation can, can occur to improve that efficiency. And HR and IT can move back to this building and out of the police department building and free those spaces up for those needed future positions in that building. One of the things we heard is that having HR and IT over in that building creates some level of disconnect. We do know that the folks in this building would like to see IT back here just for convenience. And having HR in that building creates a little bit of a barrier for new employees to feel comfortable having that, like, relationship with HR. So it's just a way to improve those adjacencies. In this scenario, as we look at that new building, just for reference, what we've done and priced out is that as we look at those four departments that would be in that new space and in that new facility, we're looking at about 8,500 square feet of workplace, which would include desks, collaboration rooms, amenities needed like kitchens that would support that workforce that's there outside of the other purposes of that building for recreation. We think this all can be done within five to six years, if that expediency is necessary. So we've set these schedules up in the sense of if we start today and start working, what can happen? These schedules can be pushed out. They can be, if we need the timeline to slow down a little bit for capital dollar use, those kinds of conversations that can happen. This is sort of just hit the ground running. Let's go. This is what we, we think it could look like if you want to start projects and just sequence them, sequence them one after the other. So again, looking at bringing that new facility online, around 2028, you see those departments move out of town hall after that renovation in 2029. And then looking at 2030 for a small renovation of the town hall to bring those folks back. With this scenario, there is a second option where we could flip-flop renovation of this building and bringing HR and IT over and then starting that new facility design and build process. And it's just a matter of how the, the departments move and when they move. So with this option, there wasn't a dependency that required things to go directly in sequence. This one had a couple, that had the two options of when things could be maneuvered. So in the second option, it actually condenses the schedule a little bit by a year and gets things complete by 2029. With the second scenario, we call this optimization of your real estate. And really, what we wanted to do was really understand what you have. And knowing that Goodman, we typically have about a 30-year lifecycle on a building before we call it end of life. And when you hit that end of life, essentially, you're looking at replacement of all your mechanical systems. Sometimes your, your foundations need repair, your parking lots for sure need to be replaced. You just, your roofing, like, your 30-year point is when your building really just needs an overhaul. Knowing that and knowing how much maintenance would have to go into Goodman, we really considered, well, what if we pulled that out of the portfolio? Are you actually saving money then by moving those functions and those, those departments to a different location instead of continuing to maintain that building? As you start to look at the maintenance costs, that building is going to get more and more expensive over the next decade. So in this scenario, that was really the focus of if we shift those departments out, what can happen? In this case, we still move HR and IT back to the town hall to include them in your administrative functions. We look at selling Goodman and using the revenue to build a new public works facility specific to their needs. Goodman is doing a very good job of being pigeon, kind of, you know, I want to say Frankenstein. Sometimes people don't like that word, but Frankenstein into what it needs to be today. Right? It's a steel structure. It can get dirty. It's meant for that type of activity. But if, and sometimes in, with the amount of storage that you all are going to need to add, the amount of fleet you all are going to need to add, looking at a new space for that group could be advantageous instead of continuing to renovate and put money into Goodman. We would also continue to think about that new facility for parks and events, knowing that they, once that Goodman space has been vacated, they could potentially move into a new space meant for them. We're looking again at a five-year timeline for this. And in this scenario, if we're just looking at parks and events being in that new facility, you're looking at about 1,000 square feet of workplace for them, for offices, workstations, a public counter, and storage and collaboration rooms. And then the third scenario, we really wanted to build on the original intention when this building was built and to think about if we took the existing expansion plans, what does that look like? And so instead of moving departments around, finding a theme, we took the amount of space that was originally intended to be added on to this building as part of the phasing process. What can we, what, who can we get into that space? And then what needs to supplement that? And so in this case, we think, based on current plans and the amount of square footage, which was around 2,700 square feet, we can bring HR and IT back to this building. We can bring events and public works into this building, the admin portions. Keep Goodman as a field office for maintenance. And again, we would still recommend that parks and events go to that new space and that public engagement. This, at that point, you're looking at about 4,500 square feet of workplace with parks field coming in as well. Any questions on the thought process behind the scenarios? Department moves, why we may have regrouped certain departments together, any of that?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't see any costs associated with any of these scenarios yet. Is that coming?
Yeah, we have a full breakdown here, and I'm happy to flip to that if you all would like. Yes, we can, we can do that.
Maybe I'm getting too granular in this, but that number, although I knew we were growing, 75 in five years, that's a lot. My question is, what's 10 years from now, staff needs? What's 15 years? I mean, this is a beautiful building, but knowing that we built this building and because of our beautiful design elements, that it can't really expand too well, is that the same play when we go to spend 120-something million, knowing that in 10 years we're going to need, you know, whatever, whatever that number is, is it double that 75? Because I think if we're going to make that kind of investment, is the 8,500 square foot facility, is that a five-year fix, a 10-year fix, 25-year fix?
Our intention is that it's a 10-year fix. You know, we've, we've looked at the data from a 10-year perspective. We would recommend then at like year eight, you start the process again to understand what your needs are going to be and to push that farther. We could do a 15-year projection. It was just, but we were, we were sort of focused on that decade mark. This building will bust at 10 years. Yes.
Got it. I mean, it sounds like way before that.
It will, it depends on which direction and how many departments are living in here. And again, all of our scenarios assume that there is either some sort of light renovation to this building, which includes new furniture systems that are more compact and intended to help hold more people. And then, of course, a lot of the layout of this building is built into how your communal spaces and conference rooms are set up. And if we reconfigure those, you're going to get more bang for your buck in this building that will just last you just enough time to hit that 10-year mark.
But a lot of that potential use of conference rooms or community rooms would then, you know, eliminate those. So there would, would be the need to have to go and build a, you know, a separate facility in order to fulfill the community aspect of it, correct?
Yeah, you could move those community events that are currently held here into that new space, plan for a 20-year growth with that building. And now you've eliminated that concern. And once you hit that 10-year mark, then you're not also displacing community-type activities. Yeah.
So I mean, I'm hearing it correctly in all, all three scenarios, that no matter what, whether we keep Goodman, sell Goodman, whatever, that, that Parks and Rec new facility, regardless, I mean, whatever the size may be, right, 8,000, 10,000, or whatever, is an absolute necessity, no matter what in all scenario.
Yes. If, if Parks is going to, Parks is going to bust at Goodman very, probably in the next three years. When you add in the public works team, then that facility busts quicker. So one of those departments or both of those departments need to move somewhere. We know this building will not hold them. So when I was saying it sort of lends yourself to a new facility, it's just how do you want that facility to be branded? And what do you want that purpose of that facility? Since we're on the feasibility study path, just makes sense to assume there's a merge of that conversation.
And I'm assuming in the, in the cost breakout or structure of this, it's taken into consideration this, the storage aspect of it and the need for additional, especially our very large vehicles. And that's in, in that whole complex of sorts, is the way I picture it.
Yeah. So the way we broke out the costs is that we utilize our, a lot of our, I would say, current projects within Gensler, so. So we have a database of all the projects right now that are going within Gensler. We have 52 offices across the world. So I can pull up, we're building a maintenance facility, how many fleet bays? Based, taking what was gathered through the interviews and the, some of the assumptions that have been made as far as projections by your staff, which they have a very good handle on what's needed. We can take that information, extrapolate out the square footage needs based on sort of what we're seeing in the design industry right now and merge those two to understand from a cost estimating perspective. We think, right, we're going to need about 1,800 square feet for fleet. Now where that is and what it looks like may be different depending on the scenario, but we know it's roughly 1,800 square feet.
Yeah. No, I mean, okay. Yeah. I mean, I think just my opinion, big picture, more than five years is, is at a, at a hundred and quarter million. Regardless, I would want to plan long term versus having to start that conversation for 125 million in five years from now.
It's a very good statement. And also to, to give you an idea, so when we look at that new facility rec center, the way we broke it out, why, why I quoted the workplace is because that's what we have as far as our information of potentially, how many employees are you going to have there? What's the ratio of headcount to collaboration spaces? You know, what might they need in amenities? What we did is we put a blanket 100,000 square foot facility, recreation facility in the cost estimation. And our cost estimator use current square foot costs for those types of facilities. And so when you see the numbers, you'll see they look very similar. It's, we use a generic placeholder for that facility that then can be validated once you've actually gone through a programming exercise. It may come down, that 100,000 square foot, maybe 65,000 based on needs. We just wanted to make sure that we put something that seemed reasonable into the numbers. So we weren't showing this is a $5 million plan. And then you also have to add in that.
Okay. I mean, so, so on the, you might've been aiming higher, right? So that might, might actually fulfill a longer timeframe. Okay.
Yes.
That's promising. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So a couple of things. So my understanding when the police department building was built, it was built with the intention of being able to expand that facility. So the initial design anticipated enlarging it. I would hope that the Parks and Rec building as a new building would have that in mind right from the get go. So as the population expands, it's on a piece of property that would support that without having to tear something else up. That it would be well designed, anticipating, to your point, Jeremy, a longer timeframe that would make it less costly and easier to add on as the needs grow. The second, the second thing is the notion that it's going to take a year and a half to design it and a year and a half to build it. No matter in any of these scenarios, that's kind of what you blocked out. And frankly, if we are planning on doing this, wherever the capital and the monies come from the ongoing program that'll be necessary, I'd like to see it, the timeframe compressed a bit because the longer it, the longer it takes to do this, the more expensive it's going to get as we know. So I would like to take, if we go down that path and it's supported by the community, I'd like to see us take a more aggressive approach to the design, to the design and, and build. So.
Kelly, can we, can we go back to the slide where you've got the FTEs on there real quick? And I think for my understanding, I'd like to see the scenarios presented with each one of those bubbles, with the FTEs in those bubbles, so we can kind of see in the scenarios where, what our count for each building might be in each one of those scenarios. So we've got 67, we go to 142. And did I hear you correctly that we're looking at one FTE? The metric is roughly one FTE for every 100 residents. Is that correct?
That's, that's typically what we see as best practice. You all will be roughly one to 93, which give or take a couple of people. Yeah. If, if it plays out in this exact way.
Okay. So just make sure I understand the metric. So if it was one FTE for every 200 residents, we'd feel understaffed. Is that the way to view that? Like there would be a greater demand for staff in that case?
It would feel like you have half the staff you need.
Okay.
And this also includes, if you think about your police department, your patrols, you know, you're managing your parks program, the more residents come in, the more kids you're going to have on the soccer field, things like that. So.
Okay. Yeah. And you bring up a great point is like, I wonder if there's better ways to break down this metric in terms of, to your point, maybe police to different departments. Is it, is it one FTE for every 100 residents, say for the Parks Department? Is that the same for HR? I, I don't know, but you, you know, or finance department might be helpful to, would be helpful to see. And then on another slide, can we go, I just want to make sure I understand the metrics. You had like the Timothys to 400 compared to a 220 to 225 slide. I think we had on the bubbles. Can you help me understand this again? What, what's being presented here at Timothys at 400? What does that feel like? In terms of that, like, how would you describe that?
Yeah. So that's a really good question. Thank you for asking that. So your, your municipalities that are on the left are municipalities that Gensler has worked with in the last five years to look at their current workspace or their specialty spaces and try to understand how can we make them more efficient in their use? This is a result of COVID, work from home policies, changes in population, whatever there, some sort of, some sort of action happened that created a response that was needed. So Adams County is a really good example where they've gone to two and a half days a week at work. And so they're finding that their government center, if you all can picture their government center, it's a very large building. Originally there was supposed to be a third tower. What we've come to say is that if you, if you really renovate that building the right way, it will last another 25 years without that third tower because of things like work from home policy that you can do desk sharing for certain functions. So we got them down to like a 270 metric usable square feet per person. So this is workstations, collaboration rooms, kitchens, communal spaces. Right? Again, it's not your mechanical spaces that would require an overhaul of the actual building infrastructure. It's just kind of your open spaces that can be reconfigured easily by moving walls and things like that. If you think about this building right now, the majority of your employees are up on the, on the second floor. The way the building is configured right now, you are, you have about 470 square feet to person currently. What we want to see is half that, which means we want to get double the amount of people in here. So what we're trying to do is bring that 470 down closer to that 250 number and reconfigure the spaces upstairs so we can get more people. One of the other things that we wanted to kind of recommend or address to you all is you have a very open lobby right now without a lot of security measures in place. So could we wall off the wall to the left, add a security door that you actually have to badge in so that access to employees is not open for everyone in the public? Just create a little more security measures that will create a more of a feeling of safety throughout this building that we've noticed just, it's just the right thing to do right now. It'll also close off a little bit more space, make more office space. So what you're trying to do is put more people in the same space, but they're requiring less space per individual because they're using smaller furniture or things like that.
So, so looking at that, again, that ratio, it's not that our, how would I describe it? I'm trying to find the right analogy. It's not that people have larger than normal workspaces as they currently exist. It's the fact that there's one half of this building that is unusable for workspaces. Is that?
It's both.
Okay.
So I will say like the, the current furniture setups that we've seen upstairs. You have an interesting office layout with some twists and turns that may not be overly feasible, but when you have a room where if you take all the walls down and you can reconfigure the walls to offices, you can also look in at different types of dasking. I think you all may have like six by eights upstairs or six by sixes. So you have an individual that has a 36 square foot space that is theirs and theirs alone. If we do benching, we can get that down to like 100 square feet because you're looking at 10 by, like a space that's 10, 10 by 10. But the way it's laid out, you can get more 10 by 10s because it's one long table essentially versus individual cubes where you're putting up barriers that require different types of circulation. So that's how we start to bring those numbers down without a lot of design intervention as an initial step.
And Erin, this is maybe a question for you. How do you envision work from home policies? And how, what kind of input did you give to this? So how do you envision your staff working in the future?
Yeah. Thanks, Luke. We do have some flexibility now, so we do have some folks who periodically work from home. We haven't formalized anything, but I think the idea of having some form of desk share would make sense for some of our positions. And, and to Kelly's point, help bring that same metric down in terms of square footage. At this point, we haven't started desk share, but that's certainly something that we can consider. You know, some, some of our roles have benefit to being here in the building. I think others have more flexibility, so that's certainly something we can incorporate for going forward.
And, and in that same light, is, you know, is Laramore County, is Windsor, is City of Fort Collins? Do they use a hybrid model in that case, like the hybrid model? Have you talked with maybe any people surrounding us? Like, is that normal? Like, how does that work in government? I just don't know.
The only one I know, and the mayor actually may be able to speak to this better than myself, but Laramore County has aggressively tried to move a lot of positions to 100% remote, to the point of actually incentivizing. Mayor, you're going to have to help me out, but a dollar amount of maybe $500 to help you buy an office chair or to purchase that thing that makes your home office more realistic as your permanent office. So there's, there's a strong incentive to do that. We might have some positions that could be more remote, not even a 50 50, but you know, maybe a 75 25. I think there are probably, and I don't want to speak for all the department heads, but there might be a reluctance to having a person 100% remote. I think there is value in bringing our groups together, but I think we could certainly look at some of those flexible options, especially for those folks who don't necessarily have a direct connect to the public. So they, so the public doesn't notice whether they're working at home or in this building. And, and we have some of those folks who rarely interact directly with the public.
Kelly, I just have one more question then. Sorry. There's tons of questions. So somebody like the police or say Parks and Rec, you know, somebody that's required to be down at the boat docks or go around. How did you guys incorporate that into your, you know, your utilization per square, usable square footage for FTEs?
That's a good question. So what we did is we actually looked, we can use the police department as an example. What we did is we looked at the staff and we pulled out the staff that are what we call facility based. Right? So your, your front desk workforce, your folks that are going to be maybe working in your labs, right? And what, what is the current thinking about when those, how many of those folks might be hired and when? And we took, we took those that we would call facility based. So not your officers that are out patrolling, but your people that actually have a desk or need a, a workspace of their own at the police station, the police department. We use that square foot, we actually pulled that square footage out. And then we use that against the, the numbers, the headcount of, of folks that are facility based to come up with that number. So it does not, it does not include, that number does not include those folks who are out patrolling on a regular basis, just so we don't inflate the numbers. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just quick question and then I'll stop my questions. But can you go back to the same map of the FTEs?
Yes. And I have this in Excel form that we can send you off.
I just want, okay. So my only question here, and I don't want it like a gotcha moment, I just want clarification. But where it says, town employees base will need to grow by 75 full time over the next five years. And the chart shows from 67 to 103 in five years and actually 75 over 10.
That is a, that's a typo on my part. It should say 10 years.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, that's like so.
Thank you for catching that.
A lot of my initial questions, I'm like, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's my apology. We'll fix that right away.
So it's 75 over 10 years?
Yes.
Okay. And do we, and do we know how many of that 75, kind of piggybacking on Luke's question, is more outside on the go base versus desk base?
This is full time facility base.
So in, so needing internal space on an ongoing basis. Got it. Okay. Do we know what that total count is period?
So sorry, what?
So like, if that's 75 needing here, what will that total number be? I mean, including police, parks and rec, maintenance out, out and about.
Do not have that number at hand, but I can, we have it broken out by what we would call field and facility base that I can send.
Know what our overall growth is as a whole. Okay. Thank you.
I just have a couple of clarifying questions, I guess. So did you say that if we were to rearrange, specifically related to this building right now, if we were to rearrange and kind of take some steps to fit more people into this space as far as how much it allows? Was that, did you say that 10 years is when this building would be full? And, and does that alleviate the, the number of people over at the Goodman building? Or would that be over capacity even with being able to move some into here?
Goodman will be at over capacity as well. So both this building and Goodman will be at, will be over capacity Goodman sooner. As your parks team ramps up, they will just fill that space. Okay. Thank you. And I, I did just find the metric. So this, this chart does show all employees and then I can break it out by field and facility. So.
I mean, it's pretty obvious that some things, some departments are growing faster than others. So, I mean, finance isn't growing at the same rate as Parks and Rec. Right? So.
So this is all very useful information. I'll tell you, for me, there's, there's a lot of new information here that I, I kind of feel like I want to process and digest. And I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. A lot of it dealing with, how do you pay for all this? Right? I think that there's a bit of sticker shock for me here compared with some of the numbers that we had been previously discussing on some of these facilities. So my, my inclination is to take a little bit of time to, to digest this. But what was the staff hoping in terms of coming away from this session? Was it simply to inform us or were we looking for some sort of decision here?
I think primarily to inform you and can let you know where we're at in the process. I think also if you had a scenario that you really liked better than the others, that would be awesome. But if, if you don't, you need more time to think about it and maybe even would like another presentation down the road. We'd be willing to do that as well. So.
You know, maybe without, you know, finalizing any decisions, I, I suppose it'd be good to go around and hear from folks in terms of the various scenarios, what aspects spoke to folks and if they had different priorities. I really appreciated the point Councilman Jenkins made with respect to, you know, if we can accelerate some of these timelines, given that things will not get cheaper. I, I appreciated and supported that, that position. But you just maybe want to take a moment and share some thoughts here?
Yeah. So I do have some initial preferences in these different scenarios. But that being said, I don't want to express them at this point. To the mayor's point, I think it's a little early. I, I think I'd like to think about it more. And I also think more importantly, as you pointed out, there's the possibility of a new rec building or rec center that's also part of another study that hasn't been presented yet. The Prose Master Plan, which also involves some community feedback. And I, I, I also involves some community feedback. And I think we need to take it all in before we head off in any direction and really think about how all the pieces fit together, both from a financial point of view, but also from a larger community point of view, as well as how it impacts employees and how we organize where staff are and et cetera. So, I mean, this is a big step for our town, and we're talking potentially about an awful lot of money. I think we need more time and more information to come up with a viable plan that would be acceptable by the community and a clear path for financing what we want to do and an appropriate timeline. And what things do we really want to push sooner and what things can kind of wait, wait a little bit and still make everybody happy? So that's kind of where my head's at at this point.
Councilmember Lake?
I think it's definitely too early to make some big decisions. I know we have our community-wide survey coming up. I think it would be great to ask some questions to the community members as far as what their top choices would be or what they would like to see. But I do think one thing that we should probably focus on is utilizing our existing space as efficiently as possible. So I think if there were minor things that could be done in order to better utilize this building, for example, I certainly think we should look at doing some of those things prior to the building of a new building.
Maybe I'm far off on this, but in one of your comments, you were mentioning this was figured at 100,000 square feet. And when I see Parks and Rec, is this a full rec center built in? I mean, 100,000 square feet's massive. So that's not just office space.
That would be basketball courts, swimming pools.
That's all built into this court. Okay. And again, I mean, to the mayor's point, I mean, we've talked of, you know, smaller versions of that, you know? I think that would probably be a Disney-sized, you know, 100,000 square feet seems pretty large. So this is, from what I'm gathering, probably the highest, you know? But in addition to what Councilmember Jenkins said, this is probably the lowest that it would cost us at this size, and it's only going to go up as we, you know, we push along. But again, that if 100,000 goes to 60,000 overall, that could be a drastic reduction. Okay. I'm just making sure that.
Yes.
We're not trying to build an additional rec center potentially on top of this, because that would be, okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
So I'm in agreement with the mayor right now of a little bit of sticker shock. You know, I think we talked 20 or 30 million, and now we're talking, you know, 120 million. So I would like a little bit of time to think on this. If I could throw out one comment on the scenarios, the only thing that I don't like is the idea of Goodman when we're about to drop our hut into it in the next month or so, whenever that might be. So I really would like that kind of thought process to go into this as well, to see, you know, what are we doing now to also tie that to the future, so that we're not getting those type of scenarios where we have to do something fancy to make it all work. I'd prefer not, yeah, to not do that. So, but yeah, I think getting community input is essential. Having a little time to think on it is great. I want to thank the staff for all the work they've done, because this is huge. And thinking ahead to these type of scenarios, there's something that I'm sure other communities don't do. So I'm appreciative of being here and having the conversation.
Is there a way, and maybe this is three steps way ahead, but when, now that we have this, and we're going to the community, and we want that input, which I think is extremely vital, is there ideas, is there scenarios, is there renderings of what, you know, a small, medium, large version of this would look like and how long that would take? So it is visually out there for the community? Is that something we have or can get? Or is that in the design aspect of it, that could take a year plus?
So as part of the Prost Master Plan, they were looking at certain scenarios. So we haven't really come out and said what we're looking at specifically for the rec center, because the survey's going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks, and it's going to ask the community what kind of amenities they want. Just for frame of reference, the Windsor Rec Center is 80,000 square feet, just to put that into perspective of what that is. So, and as part of that plan, there will be some renderings once we decide what the community would want based off of the survey feedback.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, from my perspective, I think the information will come to us soon in terms of the rec center specific feasibility study is really important. I also, at some point, would really like to see the finance committee take a look at, you know, what potential financing options would look like. And, you know, is this bond, is this sales tax, is it a combination? What does all that look like? All things being equal, I've kind of heard a little bit that given our current space utilization, we do have some excess space now, especially if reconfigured, and that at least as we're here today, I'm not hearing it's a panic mode. Three to 10 years out, the situation may be different. So kind of hearing that we're not in panic mode, you know, if we can otherwise deal with the finances. I did like the scenarios that prioritized the new rec center facility as the first item. But I could certainly be convinced to reconsider that if there were significant strategic or financial reasons to do it in a different order. So. Those are my thoughts. Is that sufficient to at least keep us marching down the path here?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I heard talk about needing more information. Is that geared towards that public input? Or is there other information that we need to be preparing either as Gensler or as a staff?
You know, for me, I think the two pieces are more thoughts on how to pay for it, and then to kind of take all the feedback that comes from the community process with both the Post update and the rec center feasibility study and incorporating that. I think once we have that data, we can have the conversation as to whether or not additional public engagement would make sense, or if we feel like we have a good finger on the pulse. I don't know what others think.
That makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, we, once we get that additional information and there's some effort put in on the financing side of it, we may want to go back to the public and ask some more questions and get more input. But I think we know more stuff is coming. Let's see what we got. Let's look at it and then put our heads together.
In terms of the presentation today, I'd just like to see more FTE information out of it. So we talked about, like, my request out of that was looking at the bubbles, maybe FTEs now, FTEs when this project is complete, giving some of that ideas. And then kind of that breakdown that we talked about, what is going to be our, what do we call that? Kind of the full-time facility employees compared to our non-facility employees would be helpful as well.
Great. I just want to make sure that we're not just sitting back and waiting, that if you need more information, that we're providing that. The other thing I would mention, Tom, jump in if I'm wrong, but I believe in the, through the Post and the feasibility of the rec center, they are contemplating financing options as part of that. I thought that was part of the scope. So they might be laying out their recommendations in terms of financing, keeping in mind that that rec facility is the bulk of the dollars. So I know it's the sticker shock, and that's a big number. The bulk of that is gyms, pools, et cetera.
So, yeah, the first phase in the Prost survey that's going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks is more about matching up the amenities. And then I believe we're going to be using the community survey to ask more of those in-depth financing questions once we know what the community wants, so we can match it up square footage-wise. Because right now, you know, we want to make sure whatever we put out there is going to actually meet what the community wants. So we were going to, I'm sorry, we're going to use the two surveys to do it, the community survey that's coming out after the Prost survey.
And I know a lot of September and October is based on budget conversations. Are we starting to incorporate these new numbers into our long-term CIP and stuff? Is that already in process, or?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will plan to reconvene at 6:00 here in about six minutes or so, but the work session should be adjourned. Good evening. We will call to order the Tuesday, August 27th, Timnith Town Council meeting. Ms. Peters-Garcia, please take the roll.
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Protem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Looks like everyone is present. Counselor, are there any requests to amend the agenda this evening? Seeing none, then we will move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to speak to counsel on any item related to the town. This is reserved for items that don't otherwise have an option for public comment during the agenda tonight. Looks like I have one person signed up. I will note that we do have a business item later, 6B, dealing with the trailside site plan. That agenda item does not have an opportunity for public comment. So if anyone wishes to speak to that agenda item, this would be the appropriate time to do that. So with that, I will start with our list and invite Lindsay Miller to the podium. Ms. Miller, welcome.
Thank you.
If you could please share with us your address, and you have three minutes.
Perfect. My name is Lindsay Miller, and I live at 5033 Fifth Ave, and I own the Hidden Stem, which is at 4,007 Main Street. First, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Lisa for coming for the council chat on August 2nd at the shop. I think that it was a great turnout, a lot of great. turnout, a lot of great topics were brought up and discussed, and so thank you very much for that. I wanted to start by saying that my heart and of course, my business is in downtown. I was born in Fort Collins, and I spent my whole childhood in Windsor. I watched the surrounding communities grow and sprawl for better or for worse. As a small business owner in Timneth, I am very excited to be a part and watch our downtown develop. I want to express my optimism for us to find a way to encourage development in the historic downtown core in a way that is meaningful and thoughtful to our community. That being said, the development and attention to downtown, or lack thereof in current years, is concerning. One of the six central themes of Timneth's comprehensive plan is an unparalleled Old Town. On page 22, the comp plan states, "Timneth has the opportunity to truly distinguish itself as a town that provides something for everyone while still maintaining the small-town character that residents love, a vibrant downtown." It also mentions downtown as a market strength and is worth enhancing and strategizing, strategizing, everyone struggles with that one, its direction to thrive in the future. This comp plan was released in 2020, which is the year that I arrived to Timneth, and in my opinion, Old Town has not been treated like a marked, like a marked asset or, sorry, an asset or a market strength. Through community involvement and suggestions to counsel, there should be things that can be implemented immediately. Many of these things have already been agreed upon, such as the clear parking painted along Main Street and added crosswalks where concrete accommodations have already been made to the infrastructure, better and more visible signage from Harmony Road, and accountability for the landings to address and improve the augmentation pond, or what we discontently refer to as the hole. There is potential small business opportunities with the renewed availability of the fire station, but not one sign is on the building from Main Street. So my question is, what can we continue to do to downtown to show the community that this is an area that everybody loves and wants to see be better? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Do not have anyone else signed up, but I would open the floor if anyone did not sign up but would like to address counsel. All right. And seeing no requests, we will move on then to our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of two items today. First approval of the August 13th Town Council meeting minutes, and second, the August 9th 2004 check register. Counselor, are there any requests to pull either of these items from the consent agenda? Then at this time, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Counseling discussion. All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will move on now to the report section, beginning with Councilmember Lake.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a quick update on the post committee. We did meet last week. It was a, a little bit of a late meeting time since the, the train on Harmony was blocking the road that night, so. But we actually had a great meeting, and I wanted to just show one sample. For those of you who haven't seen this sign yet, there will be some over at the community park, if you're there at all. This is talking about the master plan that everyone in Timneth will be receiving a survey by mail. That should be coming out by the end of September, so be sure to check your mailbox so that you can fill that survey out and give us your opinions. We are all excited to hear what your thoughts are. If you are interested in a yard sign like this, we do have a handful left, and you can talk to Tom to get one of those if you're interested. So some of the things that we talked about at the post meeting were an update related to the survey that's coming out. We also reviewed some of the items that counsel has talked about in the past, which is related to our special events policy, our field and court reservation policy. You may have seen a sign at the park as well, saying that you'll need to reserve some of that field space if you're using it for teams. It is, there were some areas already, some field areas already being used for that purpose. And then we talked a little bit about the budget and then just got some construction updates. If you haven't driven past Wildwing Park recently, I suggest that you take a drive by there. You'll see lots of structures that were not there at this time last year. And so that'll be an exciting park once that one opens as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holt, any updates?
Yes, so just wanted to remind everybody tomorrow at 2 o'clock at the Feeding Grain, I'll be hosting the next council chats. So from 2 to 3 tomorrow at the CFG, please come. Love to talk to y'all.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Sure. As some of you know, I'm on a couple of different regional councils representing the town of Timneth. One of them is the Laramo County Behavioral Health Policy Council, which is kind of a long title, but just to give you an idea of what that's about, the council's purpose is to foster regional coordination and cooperation in matters relating to the provisions of a continuum of behavioral health services within Laramo County. And it's funded through a sales tax that was approved by the voters some number of years ago, and has paid for the Longview Center, which is out by the, out by the dump, very beautiful building, and it's very well, very well-serviced. At the last meeting that I attended, the Health Policy Council passed on, approved $3 million in grant funding to go to the Laramo County Commissioners. Those funds will serve, and I'm not sure I have the exact number right, it's either 41 or 44 different nonprofits that operate within Laramo County. Four of them are dedicated to the town, their services will be dedicated to the town of Timneth in their grant. Several of the others, of course, impact, can impact citizens of, of Timneth. So a very, very important function within Laramo County. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
So got out to the community park the other day for some soccer practice. So Tom, I was maybe hoping you could just write a quick refresher on how people sign up for those, and just, I think there was people on those fields that didn't understand that we've gone to the new reservation. Is that correct? And maybe clarification of how those fields are working for anybody out there listening?
Yeah, so we're just requesting people at this time to go ahead and just reach out to Brason, our coordinator, to schedule some time, just to make sure that there's equal playing time and equal space throughout the park. We're really limited right now with only having just Timneth Community Park available, while we're trying to rehab some of the grass at the reservoir, so we might be moving some of those practices potentially out at the reservoir. But we are doing a reservation system. We'll have that policy to you. We talked about it at the work session a while back. I will be bringing it to council next week to look at, but basically reserving up to two hours a week for practices. And then we have it spaced out between five to seven different areas within Timneth Community Park for, for teams to practice.
Is there a spot on the website? Somebody, could they go to timneth.org and find a place to go to?
No, at this point, we're gonna, we're running everything through Brason, and so they'll need to reach out to him, and his contact info should be on that sign.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the update. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and actually, Tom, while you're there, just real quick, I understand we have positive news at the reservoir and the algae. Is that right?
Yeah, so the, we did do a whole week of testing where we were negative for blue-green algae, and so it's back open for boating. Unfortunately, though, the water's too shallow, so we're gonna have to put an end to motorized boating, and I was gonna put that message out tomorrow. So.
All right, well, thanks, thanks for the preview on that. Yeah, good, good news and bad news, huh? All right. Thank you. I don't have anything else, counsel. Did we miss anything there? All right. We will go now to staff updates, beginning with finance. Ms. Gagriardi.
I just have a few updates, and then Luke asked that I give just a six-month financial update since we're halfway through the year. On our Tyler implementation, our new financial system, we moved on to phase two, so we're working on implementation and training right now. Looking at the preliminary schedule, it looks like we could go live with the financial model before the end of the year. That would include the GL, AP, purchasing and project accounting with payroll and HR and court to follow beginning of 2025. So we're excited about that. With that implementation, we're redoing our entire new chart of accounts, and we're budgeting to that new chart of accounts. So departments are learning a new system and a new chart of accounts, so it's been fun. So having said that, our budget work session is scheduled for September 30th from 3 to 5, so I just wanted to let everyone know that. And then as far as June financials and where we're at six months through the year, our operating revenue is exactly at 50% of the year, so our projections are pretty on target. I anticipate we'll hit all of our revenue. The one item that we're exceeding budget so far on revenue is an interest income. Interest rates are exceeding 5% still, so we're really strong in that area. And then operating expenses, we're on target there. Every department is really close to, if not more than 50% under budget this point of the year, so I think we'll have positive news when we hit into budget.
Thank you, Lisa. Any updates on capital? Are we still, how's our capital planning going for the year?
Capital, we're gonna be on target. There are a few projects that will probably shift into 2025, but everything that you've seen has come before you as far as approving the budget and the construction, so we're creating targets.
Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa, just one quick point. The budget work session on September 30th, that is open to the public.
It is, yes.
Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions on finance? All right. Thank you very much. Let's now move on to public works. Director Stone.
Yeah, I just had one update. So staff has been working with the Laramo County Emergency Manager's Office, and also the Puget Fire Authority since the beginning of the year on our emergency operations plan, to take a look at it, to see if there's any tweaks we need. And that's gonna culminate with, actually, on this Thursday, we're gonna do a tabletop exercise. I cannot disclose what it is, because otherwise it, we'd kind of ruin the, the surprise there, to see how we would operate. So we do want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Luke to join us on that. So, and then we'll look at that, see how that works, and then make any adjustments to the emergency operations plan, and then have that back to council after we get that still planned for sometimes this fall, so.
Great. Thank you. And I know we sent out some messaging on pulse and some traffic impacts there. Can you just give us an update on, on the boring and what those impacts look like?
Yes, if you've been out there, you notice that the construction started. They've come up County Road 5. If you look at County Road 5, they're also coming along Harmony, which is the, you know, the major arterial, still on schedule, but you'll see construction, you know, happening. So yeah, so it's pretty exciting that we're not only in the planning phase, but actually we're getting it built.
Awesome. That's great news. Counsel, anything else for public works? Okay, let's move on to community development. I don't see Director Robinson. I'm not sure.
Scott.
Welcome.
Scott is with us via Zoom, but we don't have anything, any additions.
Counseling questions on the community development report? All right. Chief, is Chief here? Chief, how's life on patrol? All right, we're still, we're, we're still 24/7?
24/7 is alive and well.
Very good, very good. All right. I appreciate the update here. Counsel, anything for police? All right, and now Town Manager Adams with an update on the strategic plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The updates are there in the packet, so you can read them, but I would call out just a few. And actually, one of the ones I was going to mention is the 24/7. That was accomplished in the quarter that's being updated. We've talked about it before, but it's a pretty significant achievement for the community here. Also, wanted to call out just a couple of things for parks, especially to highlight them on Tom's birthday. If we want to sing to him later, I'll leave that to the mayor's discretion. Yep, you can get me back later. But no, on a more serious note, for the first time this spring, the town is hosting its own programming. We had a couple of different activities that people were able to take pickleball and tennis and other lessons. So that's a big first step for the community as well. Also, it's been mentioned quite a bit, but working through Parks Rec Open Space Trails Master Plan, Post Master Plan. So Councilmember Lake actually called that in her update, so that's in process and looking forward to the results of that coming soon, so.
All right. Counsel, any questions on strategic plan? And we recently held a work session to look at and update the strategic plan, and I appreciate the work that staff put into kind of a draft. I would appreciate over the next two weeks, council reviewing what's out there, make sure that, that we're comfortable where that's at, and I believe that'll come before council. Is it next session or the one after for adoption?
We're gonna try for the 10th. We'll shoot for that.
Great. Appreciate that. All right. We will now move on to our regular business items. First item 6A, I would like to welcome Wade Fickler from Together for Timneth. I'm sure Mr. Fickler will tell us a little bit more about Together for Timneth, but there's certainly an organization that has been hosting community forums, usually at CFNG on, on some interesting topics, including recently the Water Session. And back in June, Together for Timneth sent to council and town staff a document entitled, "Community Priorities and Recommendations for the Town of Timneth." We will be in September moving to our budget work session, and then also a work session to discuss next steps in terms of Old Town. And since it had been a while since we received this document, I wanted to invite Together for Timneth here to kind of share with us and the community, kind of an executive summary of, of what they provided here. So I very much appreciate Mr. Fickler agreeing to do that and, and keeping the conversation alive and well here. So with that, I will turn over Mr. Fickler. We've allocated about 10 minutes here for you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I get the slides up here? There we go. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Oxmaker, for the invitation to present this evening, and thank you to council members and staff for your attention to the issues I will be highlighting in my presentation. My name is Wade Fickler. I reside at 4029 Kern Street, and I'm the president of Together for Timneth. Together for Timneth's mission is to advance, together for Timneth's mission is to advance downtown Timneth as the heart of our community by one, promoting community-oriented economic, cultural, and social development; two, advocating as a unified and influential voice for downtown; and three, fostering an active, informed, and connected community throughout Timneth. We do this because we envision Timneth's downtown as a vibrant and distinctive hub of economic, cultural, and social opportunity that is celebrated and supported by all people of Timneth and surrounding communities. We operate as a 501(c)(3) organization under the fiscal sponsorship of the Colorado Nonprofit Development Center, and we are committed to building the civic infrastructure and fostering the necessary conditions for Old Town or downtown Timneth to prosper as the heart and soul of our community. We do so by, one, hosting monthly forums on topics of interest and importance to the community, such as last year's one and only Town Council candidate forum, and this month's forum on the future of Timneth's water supply. We also drive community engagements, such as we did with the Noon 3H campaign in 2022, and coalescing and channeling. and coalescing and channeling public input to town council and staff, such as we did with last year's Holiday Lighting Festival survey in this presentation tonight. We believe our role is essential. Our nation's history tells us that without civic organizations such as Together for Timneth, communities die from neglect, malfeasance and questionable business practices. Recognizing the expressed desire of this council and recently hired staff to work in partnership with community members to achieve our common objectives, Together for Timneth outlined a comprehensive set of priorities and recommendations for your consideration and response. Broken out into these eight categories, we believe our priorities and recommendations are in the best interest of the entire community and are important next steps for realizing the vision set forth in the town's comprehensive plan. Everything I will cover tonight is in the package that you received in June, though in the interest of time, I will not cover everything, nor will I cover it exactly as presented in the document. Okay. So who doesn't love a good donut, right? Like those from Backyard Bird? But what's missing in this picture besides maybe a cup of coffee or a cold glass of milk? It's the middle. The middle is missing, and that's where the magic is. The most tender part of a donut is the middle, be it a jelly filled or cream filled donut or the donut holes shown here. The same is true with communities and town centers. Let's just spend a minute thinking about why we should all care about the future of Old Town Timneth, especially Main Street. Historic town centers attract businesses. Revitalizing downtown areas can attract new businesses, including retail, dining and entertainment options, which then create jobs, boost tourism, increase property values and contribute to the local economy. They also create a sense of place. Historic town centers are often the heart of a community, providing a strong sense of place and identity. Investing in these areas fosters community pride and strengthens the connections between residents and their town. And three, community engagement. Revitalizing historic areas often involve the community in the planning and development process, thereby promoting civic engagement and a sense of ownership over our shared places. I'll now move into our priorities and recommendations. First up is revitalization of Main Street. It's time to ramp up the Main Street program. We've been talking about it for some time now. And Scott Robinson and Logan Graves and the rest of the team know the value of this program. They've worked with it, they've seen it in action in other communities. So let's get going. Opportunities are being wasted every day. Irrespective of the Main Street program, it's past time to replace the town's neglected landscaping and maintain future landscaping at all entrances to Old Town and along Main Street sidewalks. This was last supposed to happen in the spring of 2023, and it hasn't happened yet. Main Street traffic, another topic that's been talked about a lot. So your predecessors created kind of a pickle for you by first deciding to close through traffic on Main Street from the southern entrance and then adopting a plan prioritizing Main Street as the thriving business district. These two things are generally regarded as being at odds with one another, but by getting curious and working together, I'm confident we can figure this out. We recommend the following. Commission an independent study of options to keep local business and resident traffic flowing on Main Street and trucking through traffic on Timneth Parkway. It's a both and situation, not a nor. Commission a study to project traffic flow on Main Street once Timneth Parkway is open. It's time to start making business deals, and uncertainty about future traffic flow is a deal killer. Enforce current restrictions on heavy truck traffic on Main Street. With 24/7 police coverage, it seems like it should be possible now to start ticketing overweight vehicles barreling down Main Street. Lastly, as Lindsay mentioned earlier, deploy traffic calming measures, including adding crosswalks where the curb cuts already exist. Moving to economic development. Together for Timneth supports Councilmember Jenkins' proposal to hire an Economic Development Director. We do so because bad development comes easily and good development takes effort, know-how and resources. Without the leadership and guiding hand of an experienced Economic Development Director, Timneth will continue developing just as it has in recent years, attracting run of the mill businesses catering mostly to people passing through rather than people who live here. Neither Main Street nor the Artisan Village will develop as outlined in the comprehensive plan on their own. It will take dedicated staff to realize this vision. We have a case study underway right now. A celebrated Fort Collins Restaurant is trying to open their second location in the Savant Building, and the town is doing nothing to help. This is where an Economic Development Director would provide guidance and support to both parties to further the town's goal of revitalizing Main Street. I understand some of you don't see the return on investment for an Economic Development Director. To that, we ask, what questions are you asking? Are you including lost revenue from deals that don't happen because there's no liaison for businesses to work with? Countless businesses have approached the town with interest in setting up shop, and all of them were turned away. We know this from reports from town staff. We know it because we've been sending businesses your way. Ironically, if there is a position that would pay for itself, this is probably the one. But it doesn't make it a reasonable criterion. Are there any other positions that are expected to pay for themselves? No offense to Tom and his team who are doing fantastic work with Parks and Rec, but are they really expected to pay their salaries with Parks and Rec fees? Please keep in mind, please keep an open mind to Councilmember Jenkins' proposal. Our October forum will feature economic development experts from neighboring communities. And I promise you, once you hear from them, you'll be asking yourself a different set of questions. Now on to property acquisition and land use along Main Street. The sale of the Fourth and Main property to Savant was intended to be the catalytic event for revitalizing Main Street. But after nearly a year after the deal was announced, it collapsed without any public explanation. Before and since that deal fell through, community members have been broken conversations with Ginger and Baker and Savant. This could be an opportunity to use the town's small business incentive program to remove obstacles. But again, nobody representing the town has brought this idea forward. Fourth and Main is not the only lost opportunity this summer. By not proactively working with the owners of the Fine and Funky Building to attract a retail tenant, we now have an engineering firm squatting in what should be prime retail space. What what would help here would be perhaps adopting land use codes that align with the town's vision for Main Street. Now, it's not too late to work with the sellers of 4135 Main Street, which is sometimes called the Gas Station Building, to ensure that this highly strategic property is reserved for uses that do align with the town's comprehensive plan. The building could be a candidate for facade improvements, and there is public money available to support environmental cleanup should that be necessary. And it's certainly not too late to ensure that Timneth's post office stays in Old Town by proactively engaging with the owners of the land it sits on. It's imperative that we understand their long term intentions for the property and the duration of the post office's lease. At the same time, the town should engage with the postal service to understand their intentions for postal facilities and service in Timneth. Because no one sitting before me lives in Old Town, it's possible that you don't know that this tiny post office is ground zero for civic life for so many Timneth residents. You see, we don't have mail delivery in Old Town. So the post office is where we meet our neighbors and it's where we reaffirm our Timneth identity every single day when we pick up our mail. If you're lucky, it's also where people bring you eggs from their farm and flowers from their garden. It's a significant community asset that should be protected. Getting very close. The Artisan Village. Our recommendations here are, or our requests here are that you include the Artisan Village property in the visioning and revitalization process for Old Town, including the Main Street program. Think of them together as in a comprehensive way. Also, commit to an extensive public input process for determining how the Artisan Village property is developed and further commit to engaging external community design and development experts in the process. And lastly, agree to hold multiple community meetings and gather substantial public input should the, should any potential sale of a property come to be. Moving on to community events, we're asking that you significantly increase the budget and support for planning and executing community driven events in Old Town in fiscal year 2025. It's time to make good on on your promise to double the fund. Together for Timneth, Main Street businesses and Timneth Presbyterian Church are eager to work with a good faith partner to bring about community driven events back to Old Town. Please include ample funding in your budget. It doesn't need to be the $300,000 we spend on fireworks, but a cool $100,000 would be a good start, and Together for Timneth will help raise the rest. And now on to civic engagement. Timneth Home Rule Charter does not mention civic engagement. Not one word about the importance of public input or community driven decision making. Here's what we ask. Contract with a recognized expert in civic engagement to assess our current state and make recommendations for improvements. Consider charter reforms that would require more effective public input processes and greater representation. Require that public input meetings be held throughout the life of a major development, not just at the beginning. Require that townwide, require townwide public notice for neighborhood meetings, quote neighborhood meetings, when the projects affect the entire town. And lastly, establish term limits for the planning commission. All right, you heard a little bit this evening already about the pits. Whether you call it a retention pond, a detention pond, an augmentation pond or recharge pond, it's a disgrace to our community. It's an affront to those of us who live in its proximity, and it's an egregious case of malfeasance. If you think this is unfair, please explain to the public why this Old Town property looks more like the Berkeley pit than the green space it was designated to be. Together for Timneth first raised alarm bells last fall and has since walked three council members and three senior staff through the property. I'm told remedies are being pursued, and I'm confident that they are. But secondhand information is not enough. It's time to go public with the problem and the solutions. The public has a right to know. A recommendation in this regard is that you compel the development company to complete the work this year. It's been stalled for nearly two years. And then ensure and plan, ensure that a plan and funding are in place for long term routine and routine upkeep of the pond, the trails and the landscaping. We understand this is a metro district property, but the town has oversight authority and responsibility. So I thank you very much for your time and your attention. On behalf of the Together for Timneth Board of Directors pictured here, we think that a meeting with staff to talk through the pros and cons of these ideas and the viability of them would be an appropriate and reasonable next step. And as for this evening, I'm happy to answer any questions or hear your thoughts or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fickler. Sincerely do appreciate the the time and energy and thought that went into producing this document, and I appreciate you coming here today to summarize it for us. Also appreciate all the Together for Timneth members and supporters that that came out tonight, so. Thank you very much, council. Any, anything before we move on?
Yeah, I would just like to second the thank yous to Wade and and the entire Together for Timneth Board for working on on this in the presentation. Much appreciated.
All right, we ready to move on? Very good, we'll move on now to business item 6B, Resolution Number 59, Series 2024, a resolution approving the Trailside Multi-Family Site Plan. Ms. Graves.
All right. The Trailside Multi-Family Site Plan is an application for a multi-family residential development consisting of three 56 unit buildings totaling 168 dwelling units. The subject property is located south of Harmony Boulevard, east of Signal Tree Drive, west of Kidd Street and north of Stonefly Drive in the Trailside Development. So a little bit about the process. This property is part of the rendezvous planned development overlay and subdivision. The planned development overlay and sketch plan were approved in January 2018, followed by the approval of the preliminary plat and final plat for the first filing in August 2018, which officially established the lot for this project. The final plat for the second filing was then approved in March 2020. As you can see, site plans represent one of the final steps in the land development process. And for this proposal, staff reviewed it according to our, to the site plan criteria outlined in Section 299 of the Land Use Code. Our land use code requires a neighborhood meeting and approval by town council for properties with two or more buildings. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 2nd, and the observation report was included in your packet. So I'd like to zoom out a little bit and provide some context, and then we'll zoom back in. The zoning for this property is R3 mixed residential with a planned development overlay, which again was approved in January of 2018. A planned development overlay is a zoning district that allows for flexible land use and design regulations. The intent is to encourage things like innovative site design or a mix of residential dwelling types that our land use code cannot easily accommodate. So it's an additional layer of planning control applied to a parcel of land, and it supersedes the requirements of the underlying zone. On the left is the approved planned development overlay, and the colored pop out image is a conceptual exhibit submitted during the sketch plan phase. So this exhibit clearly shows that both senior housing and multifamily uses were being considered right from the very beginning of this development. This table outlines the key differences between our land use code, what is permitted with the approval of the planned development overlay, and what is being proposed with this application. The first significant difference is the density. The R3 base zone is set at eight dwelling units per acre, but the planned development overlay increased this to 24 dwelling units per acre. The current site plan is proposing 19.8 dwelling units per acre. The second difference is the building height. While our code allows a maximum height of 35 feet, the approved planned development overlay permits up to 40 feet. And finally, the land use table removed the conditions for multifamily developments found in Section 4415 of our land use code allowing multifamily developments by right. So to zoom in now, you have all seen something similar before. The subject properly, property had an approved site plan dated January 11th, 2022 for adult active, active adult housing. And the proposal before you largely retains the original design, which changes primarily to the parking lots and detention ponds due to the different parking requirements for multifamily. So this table shows the different parking requirements for the two uses, which amounts to 163 extra parking spaces required for multifamily. Here are the two site plans side by side with the biggest change highlighted in red. Surface parking is proposed where a detention pond was previously located. Summary of the changes from the previous seminal include the parking count increased by 112 spaces, the reduction of one service detention pond. Some of the amenities changed to appeal to a wider range of age groups. Enhanced landscaping was incorporated along Stonefly Drive. Additional stone was added to the west facing detached garage structures, and the entrances were enhanced on the three multifamily buildings. The applicant is exceeding the open space requirement, providing approximately three acres with 1.29 of that being usable. That usable open space area includes the clubhouse, outdoor pool, outdoor kitchen and gathering area, the flexible lawn area and a dog park. So here's a colored rendering of the entire site. And then pictured are the elevations of the buildings, which are all similar, similar across all three buildings. And then here are views of the development from across Stonefly. So last Tuesday, August 27th, the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and recommended approval with a 5-0 vote. However, they did raise a few concerns that I'd like to address briefly. The first concern was about building height. Some of the renderings showed the height measured to the top of the ridge, which is about 43 feet. Our land use code specifies that building height should be measured from the average finished grade to the average distance between the highest ridge and its eve. So each of the three buildings using that protocol measure approximately 39 feet, which is within the PDO allowance of 40 feet. The second concern was about parking. Questions are raised about our parking requirements, which are based on the ITE Parking Generation Manual. which are based on the ITE Parking Generation Manual. This manual provides estimates for parking demand across various uses, and the guidelines for multifamily range from 0.66 to 2.5 spaces per unit. So our town requirements fit well within this range. To provide additional context, we went ahead and compared our parking requirements with those of Windsor and Fort Collins. Our requirements are consistent with both communities, with Fort Collins requiring the least amount of parking. So this project would only need 208 parking spaces in Fort Collins. It's also worth noting that both Windsor and Fort Collins offer parking credits, which allow on-street parking to count towards the parking requirement at a rate of one credit for on-street space adjacent to the lot. The commissioners also asked us to review the Riverbend Apartments to provide insight into parking adequacy. In their first phase, Riverbend provided 6% fewer spaces than required, but then compensated for this in their second phase. I did speak with the manager, who mentioned that about 100 spaces in that west lot go unused. So the parking issue seems to be more about proximity and convenience rather than the amount of parking being provided. So in conclusion, staff finds that the site plan meets the review criteria outlined in Section 299 and complies with the Land Use Code and planned development overlay. I'd like to add that although this wasn't in the staff report, the site plan also is consistent with the comprehensive plan, particularly Goal 5.1, which emphasizes the availability of a mix of housing to support various household composition and income levels. The Community Development Department is recommending approval of the site plan application, and with that, I'll pass it on to Norris Design.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, how are you this evening? Thank you for having us. Brian McBreen with Norris Design, 244 North College Avenue, Fort Collins, Colorado. Thanks for having us tonight, and I really want to appreciate Logan and staff for getting us to this point this evening. And she actually did a really great presentation, so I'm going to try not to go over plowed ground too much here with you all. So you don't have to hear it twice, because I know you guys are used to that. So I'm going to skip through a lot of it, but you know, we were, I guess I'm going to step back a little bit to just a little bit more information about the project itself. We're excited about this project, and yes, this is pretty much what you saw two years ago, with the exception of us adding parking instead of detention and detention area. And that was in order for us to meet multifamily parking requirements for the town of Timneth. But we're excited for these three large buildings. Internally corridor-served with an elevator, so they're slightly different than what you typically see with your three-story multifamily project. We're excited about the central, the anchored amenity space with a pool, outdoor space for recreation. And we think it's going to be a nice addition to the Trailside community, as well as the rest of Timneth. You know, we already kind of pointed out the differences here, but you can see it's very similar. Detention just was undergrounded to accommodate this new parking, but otherwise, the plan is very similar outside of a few architectural enhancements that weren't recently, originally there. Went through the planning commission items we talked about. We listened to them. We wanted to make sure we were right, and we were following code, and the standards were required to follow. So Logan did a great job of enumerating where we are. One thing I wanted to add with parking, though, another thing, is it's not counted towards our final, but we have 48 tuck-under parking spaces, or we have 48 tuck-under parking spaces in each of those, or total between the three buildings. Behind each of those garage spaces is actually a driveway. So those actually could be utilized as parking spaces as well. So that's another 18% parking. Not to say they always will be, but they can be. So it's kind of a nice incentive. It's almost a bonus there. But those don't count towards our meeting the requirement. Building height, we addressed that. There also was a comment about drainage. One of the planning commissioners asked us to look at that, and we double-checked that. We talked to the manufacturer of the supplies we're using, talked to our structural engineer. And we also talked to our geotech. They all feel like our proposed solution is going to work. It's going to be sustainable. It's going to work in the long term. But you know, planning commissioner Wood asked us to look at that, and we definitely took a peek at that, just to make sure we were on the up and up there, and we feel like we're in a good spot. Kind of in conclusion, you know, I'm a planner. We work with engineers, architects, the developers, and we have to use the guiding documents that are approved in place when we do a development. So in this instance, as was pointed out, we have the rendezvous planned development overlay. We have the Timneth Land Use Code that we have to follow, right? And I think it's important to note that we did that. There are no variances or deviations from either of these approved guiding documents that we're asking for today. We're just asking for an amendment to an approved plan. Staff has supported this request. Timneth Planning Commission recommended approval. They had some questions, and hopefully we answered those today. And I think it's important to also talk about the benefits to this community as well. Sometimes it always looks like we're just asking for stuff here, but you know, tonight, we're adding additional housing diversity and just stock. Hopefully, it's more attainable for some of the people, or people that don't want to live or buy a house. Smart growth. We're putting density where it belongs and is planned for. Meets the vision of the Trailside community that was envisioned with the rendezvous PDO and kind of those discussions that went along with that. And then finally, provide some more density kind of adjacent to these commercial areas that I know we'd all like to see. I know a common thing you hear a lot of these is, I want a restaurant I can walk to, or I want a bar, or I want someplace I can walk to. And to make that stuff work, you got to have the rooftops. And sometimes just single-family detached does not provide the density that makes that happen. So I guarantee that will happen because of this development, but that just helps foment that. So this evening, we ask for your support in moving this forward and approving that. I'm joined by our project team applicant here, as well as our project engineer, and we're happy to stay and answer any and all questions you might have. So kind of with that kind of quick, but like I said, if there's any questions or clarifications you have, please reach out. We're happy to chat. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Council, we'll start with questions. Councilmember Lake, I see you had some.
Sorry, I just lost my place on my, can you come back to me? Sorry.
Sure.
I switched the page. I'm.
Good. Good, Councilmember Holt. Just curious, you answered my question. So rent, all rentals, correct?
Correct.
What's the approximate price point? Not that it really matters, but just curious what a rental goes for.
I'm going to defer to the applicant. He can give you better numbers than I can.
Okay.
Spencer?
Good evening, Mayor. Council staff. My name is Spencer Edwards with Hausmann Development, 8885 Executive Woods Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska. So to answer your question, the range will be determined kind of upon that lease-up timing when that happens. But in today's market, a one-bedroom that we have planned, based on square footages, is between $1,380 and $1,700 a month. And then the two beds would be around $1,800 to $2,300 a month.
And it's just, it's a one-bed, two-bed?
One-bed, two-bed, yes. 168 units. There's 88 one-bedroom units, three variant sizes. And then there's 80 two-bedroom units with three various sizes as well.
I guess my question is more on the, I think the parking's adequate, in my opinion, especially with knowing the tuckaway and the, but in that many units and the growth of EV, do you think six is adequate for that many units?
I can't predict the future per se, so we're meeting what we have to these days. But the infrastructure is in place, and there's additional loads in our electrical panels to bring on more as necessary. In previous developments and projects that we have in the Midwest, we have gotten recommendations or requests from current residents who have bought an EV and wanted to charge in a tuck-under garage, detached garage, or just next to the clubhouse, and we have been able to, excuse me, fulfill those requests. So we're open to it. You know, there's multiple different variations of those EV chargers, and we're just trying to figure out the best one to use.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, just related, is Logan, is there a requirement that they have a certain number of EV chargers with this development?
Yes, they are required one EV space for every 50 parking spaces.
Got it. So 50 required spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's several. And I noticed in the neighborhood meeting, one of the concerns was parking, particularly street parking, concerned about the use of street parking and maybe over-parking on the street, and some of the things that sometimes come with lots of street parking trash, et cetera. More opportunity for automobile braking, et cetera. But I think it's important to note the requirement, according to code, is 274 spaces for this multifamily. You're providing that, but you're also providing in addition another 48 spaces for a total of 322 onsite spaces, not counting the driveway spaces. Is that correct?
It would be counting those tandem driveway spaces.
Okay, the tandem driveway spaces. So that's still 322 spaces. And then I guess this is for staff. If there was a problem with abusive street parking, the town has a number of methods at its disposal to deal with any problems in street parking, I would think.
Yeah, I may have the police chief also answer. There are some requirements for the type of vehicles and how long they could stay on the street.
Right.
And then there's just about, you know, if they're, if they have oil leaking and those kind of concerns too would be addressed. And then also if there's any parking, like on Kidd Street or Timneth Trail Road, that is a bike lane, there's no parking. There's already signs, no parking. So they park, they would be blocked in the parking lane. So Stonefly Drive does have parking, so there would be possibilities that, you know, visitors or whatever would be able to use that. But maybe the chief could answer a little bit more on kind of the code requirements for parking violations.
If it's posted appropriately, I will handle it as far as ticketing. Impetus would be particular types. So if it's a travel trailer parked on a roadway or a RV, that would be problematic. But normal cars, as long as they're properly parked according to the model traffic code, fine.
Right. So if somebody parks there longer than 72 hours, that's an issue, according to the model, et cetera, or an RV, or a boat, or things like that. So we already have codes to deal with it. And the reason I'm spending a little bit of time is there was quite a bit of concern around street parking. I don't, and one of the thoughts was, gee, could you hand out resident parking stickers if it became a problem? Well, these residents would qualify since they live in the neighborhood. The only people that would be affected by that is visitors, so.
And in addition, if I may, our third-party property management company that has all of our 2,200-plus units is well-versed in this in infill projects in city centers, downtowns. And what they recommend that we do in this situation is to, one, limit the number of vehicles per lease; two, to give out parking permits for the residents themselves; and three, post the rules and regulations. And if residents were to break those, there would be towing involved. And so that's something that they would do day to day.
So you're sensitive to the problems that parking can cause in the neighborhood, which is wonderful. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time on that, since it was a big issue with the folks in the neighborhood. Thank you.
So I was just reading the neighborhood meeting minutes, and there is comments in there that says, you know, recent 55-plus haven't leased the way it was supposed to. I guess I find that surprising with an aging population. Can you explain a little more about that and why this decision was made for senior living versus multifamily?
Yes. So through market studies reports and talking with other developers who specifically specify in the active adult or age-targeted living, what we have found was that post-pandemic, those residents have decided to either stay in their current single-family residential house or move into more of a multifamily space, because they want that additional diversity of age groups. And so that was kind of the key takeaway from that, to switch this to a multifamily. You know, have it open to a broader range of resident types and use that to, you know, really provide success for the city, for this property, and for us. This is a privately funded development. It's, you know, Hausmann Corporation internal funds. It's not a project that we build, lease up, and then flip three years down the road. You know, we're looking to be a neighbor in this community. And so for us to do that, we'd like to have a little bit more reassurance that we're going to have enough residents and leases to make it a successful project.
Thank you. I've got some questions for staff. Logan, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask some very dumb questions, if that's all right. So when we look at the Land Use Code for zoning R3, and it's permitted with conditions, but that doesn't apply in this case, right? That's because of the PDO overlay that was voted on in 2018. Is that correct?
That is correct. The PDO overlay lifted those conditions.
Okay, and so some of those conditions were, looking at the building height was one of those. So the 40-foot was one of the ones. Just making sure I understand that right, from 2018?
Can you say that again?
Yes. So some of the, some of the things that the PDO overlay did as well, I'm sorry, not conditions, was change the height from 35 to 40 feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so generally, when we look at 40 feet, if we look at that type of thing, we're generally assuming at the time will be three-story residences. Is that why somebody might change it to 35 to 40 feet?
Ask that again?
So let me, sorry. So why would somebody want to modify at the time 35 to 40 feet? Like, what's some of the benefits of that?
I seem to be able to build a three-story building. You need 40 feet.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then when we look at the approval criteria, talked about consistency with the comp plan. Can you talk about, I think you touched on 5.1? And I know in our comp plan, 5.1, so 5.12 talks about, you know, looking to for especially senior housing. So, you know, is there, how do you feel that part nine or letter I in our comp plan? Can you explain your reasoning a little more around that to me?
So with senior housing, another thing the PDO overlay did was allow for senior housing in the R3, which it's not allowed in our Land Use Code. So it granted that extra permission to allow for more flexibility for more housing types. The applicants did move forward with a plan to do senior housing, as you saw that site plan a few years ago, but because it didn't pencil, that's, we're here now with the multifamily. But I think, you know, the comp plan reiterates, you know, we're trying to serve different compositions, different income levels, and provide a wider variety of housing types in our community.
And on that, like I know, is it Timneth 9th filing? So in there, I think we're getting a lot of apartments and condos and townhomes. Do you think this is still meeting that criteria of looking for that diversity of housing?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just to kind of piggyback off that piece about the senior housing, I very much understand the reasoning why, if they're not leasing, you know, you don't want vacant apartments. Will anything be done to try to encourage senior living and specifically possibly related to accessibility? I know you mentioned an elevator, which I think is great, but will there be specific units that are handicap accessible? And I actually don't know offhand if there's a requirement, or if you'll meet that requirement, whether you'll exceed that requirement, like what are plans to possibly promote it to seniors who potentially are looking?
Right. So what I would say to that is I am not an architect nor code official by any means, but my understanding with that is there's the ANCA and ANCB units. The ANCA are the The ANSI A are the, you know, handicap-ready units that are there. And we have to meet a percent requirement of number of units from day one. The ANSI B units are activated because we do have elevators that can take wheelchairs from one to three. So every unit in the property is considered an ANSI B unit, which ultimately states that it needs to have the proper backing and supports for grab bars and other ADA accessible items. The big difference there is, you know, your your countertop heights are going to still be at the taller height versus the lower for the full ADA ANSI A units. But everything else is very convertible, if you will, to do that. So and that is one thing that the elevators provide.
Thank you.
So this plan changes essentially three things. It changes the residents who will live there and removes the age requirement that they be over fifty-five. It removes a detention pond and replaces it with, I forget the word you used to describe it.
Underground detention?
Underground detention, yes. And then it adds parking. And so can I first ask about the technology, the underground detention pond? And kind of our confidence or non-confidence that this proposed solution is as good as the prior detention? Why? Why should we have confidence in that?
Well, I'm going to have to turn that over to David because I am not the expert there.
My name is David Pendleton, eighteen eighty Fall River Drive, Loveland, Colorado. I'm the civil engineer for this project. Underground detention is becoming a lot more common just for space uses, especially in Colorado as things expand. But the vaults that we are going to be changing to are concrete vaults that can support an H twenty load. So fire trucks can go over it and cars can go over it. We haven't seen any kind of major problems with anything that is underground versus above ground. The very main issue is just not being able to physically see it. Everything else still functions exactly the same way with overflow spillways and detention requirements.
So so will these vaults be under the the parking lot?
That is correct.
And that's where they're physically located?
Correct.
Okay. How does the volume of the vault compare to what the volume of the detention pond would have been?
So we had to increase the volume of the detention pond underground, basically just because we added more impervious area due to the parking above it. So before it was all landscaped, and then now we put pavement on top of it. So the vaults actually had to be bigger than the original detention pond. But the volume is does meet the requirements.
Is from like a cost perspective, I'm curious. You say these are becoming more common. Are they, it sounds more expensive than putting in a detention pond. Is it that you recover the usable space like you've done here? You know, what are the benefits to using that technology?
Yeah, it's mainly a usable space, as you can see in Colorado, a lot. Sites get smaller and smaller, there's not as much development area that you can propose. So being able to put parking or something else on top of that area to not have a giant open grass area, that's kind of what people are using for the underground detention.
We had a significant rain event here recently that that caused some some concerns for folks. I'm curious, Director Stone, from an engineering perspective, and maybe you're not the the expert on this, but is the town confident in this technology and its ability to appropriate properly facilitate the drainage?
So they still have to meet our requirements as far as how much they have to detain and release. As what was mentioned before, is out here in in Timoth, it's still kind of a green field. You don't run into this as frequent because, again, it's more costly. So usually you see these in areas that are more for more urban or more dense areas. So our criteria is still based upon more of the ponds. But we do reference what's called the Urban Flood Control District, which is the Denver area. And so they do say for urban areas or for urban areas or more dense areas that these would be could be provided for it. So our criteria really doesn't address it too much, other than they still have to meet all the volume standards and that kind of stuff. And the only difference is now it's underground. Like you said, you can't see it. But they still have to meet all the other criteria. It's it does meet our criteria that we have.
Do you know, is this technology in place anywhere else in town right now?
No.
Okay. This would be a first adventure for us.
Yeah, this would be the first one.
Just just a related question. Is is the underground storage accessible if it needs to be cleaned from debris or et cetera?
Yeah. So they have several ports along the entire facility that they're able to open up, take a look physically in there and see what kind of debris is in there to either maintain it, vacuum it out, or get in there and maintain as needed.
Okay, thanks.
I guess my only question is, I'm going to go back to that same storm a couple of weeks ago. I think we all came in here with pictures that day in shock of the retention ponds quickly overflowing. And my only concern is a retention pond can overflow and it goes down goes down the roads and it's still, you know, evaporates. Where does it go when it overflows underground?
So there are several options that we have. There's wear walls that control the type of flooding. The underground detention has to hold the hundred-year volume inside of it. So if you have a hundred-year storm hit it, it'll all be maintained inside the vault. If a rain event bigger than a hundred-year event goes in there, it'll spill into the pipes that release it at a faster rate than would normally be required based off the town code. And there's another inlet inside of, I think it's Timoth Road Trail on the east side that it'll actually spill out of and go down the roadway.
Okay. So the by adding the parking here, I I'm satisfied that that it's within our criteria. But we previously approved a site plan with significantly less parking. Can someone speak to in adding this additional parking, how it is still in compliance with the traffic plan and and our confidence that the feeder streets and whatnot servicing this area can can handle the traffic?
Yeah. So they originally had a a traffic plan was called the rendezvous traffic study that was done. And then whenever there's any change, they still have to do what's called a compliance. So they rerun the numbers with the new provisions. Staff had looked at that and stated according to the findings that it meets the new, still meets the standards of the traffic study.
You know, the last couple of days I've been driving through here and maybe it's back-to-school traffic. But I have seen that as the cars queue up to essentially go from this building and turn left onto Harmony, that queue line now is extending essentially into the roundabout. And so at least at certain times of day, you know, we're actually seeing the roundabout get get blocked now. I'm curious, you know, this seems like something that would would contribute to that problem.
Yeah. So actually, if you go out there, it was already striped for what's called like two left turn lanes. Right now you're only using one of them. So actually, I'm having our Kim and our group is actually looking at that. Last time we did the signal timing on the road, it didn't warrant it, but we know, especially with the landings on the other side, with all these different developments and also from also noticing that to we're actually looking at maybe addressing that by maybe putting in double left turn lanes at that spot.
Okay. So that's that's something that had been anticipated as volume increased.
Yeah, that's why it was designed that way.
You know, one of our our criteria here is is that the proposed use shall have no more adverse healths, adverse effects on health, safety or welfare of the surrounding properties. And I don't know if it's something that the chief maybe could speak to. Do we perceive an increased impact on potential safety, police response with a population of all ages versus fifty-five plus? And, you know, will that cause issues for for your department? Okay. And what was already approved in this case was essentially the same density. What was changed is the the population of who's occupying the building, right? Council, other questions?
And to add to that real quick, our property management company does do thorough background checks and receive credit scores. So we know that the applicants are, you know, really at the standard of the Class A build that we provide. So that is another kind of false safe, but.
Yeah. Okay. And I I only bring it up because we've had, and this may be anecdotal, but we had a number of comments about one of our other multifamily facilities and and kind of a series of of needs for police response. And I appreciate the the chief providing the the background on those. And so just kind of considering that in this context as well. Council, other questions? Okay. Anything else in the applicant or staff perspective?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Well, there's no other questions at this time. Is there anyone with a motion to propose?
Yes, I'll put a motion to approve Resolution Fifty-nine, Series Twenty Twenty Four, a resolution approving the trailside multifamily site plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. We will move on to discussion. Anyone that would like to share their perspective?
Yeah. Were you going to go first, Jim? Okay. So, you know, my my general opinion is we talk a lot about the comp plan. And in the comprehensive plan, Need Six identifies a lack of diversity of housing types to support changing demographics and affordability. On that note, I'm I'm kind of sad and disappointed that this is not going to be a senior living based on that because our demographics is changing. Timoth is probably the youngest it'll ever be in this moment that we live here. So I'm kind of sad about that. Objective five point one, two states that we should develop, you know, programs to support different types of attainable housing, especially for seniors. So in this with losing this potential fifty-five-plus housing, I'd really hope that as staff or future developers could look to this type of housing in the fifty-five-plus because I do think we have a need for it. You know, and based on the research that I did, you know, I'm guessing about twenty percent of our population is above the age of fifty-five. So a significant amount, not a not an insignificant amount. And, you know, I don't think we're meeting this as a town for this, this demographic, and I expect it to increase. One of my goals here is that I want my kids to live in Timoth someday, but also want grandparents to be able to live in Timoth as well so that we can have that type of community here. So, you know, back in, I went back and read the meeting minutes from two thousand and eighteen. And I know the mayor at the time had asked the sketch plan to have a statement that the intent of the potential senior housing multifamily would be would, excuse me, senior housing would be considered before multifamily. So I know we had had hopes for this all the way back to two thousand and eighteen. But, you know, I do want to say that based on the criteria and what we're seeing here today, I believe it meets all that. So although disappointed, I'm going to vote in favor of this. And I want to also thank staff. I know, Logan, I've asked you a lot of questions and thank you for the background with the providing the PD overlay so I could review it. So, but again, I see that meets the criteria, so I will be voting in favor of this.
I will. I I also believe it meets all of the requirements. And while I I definitely think we need a variety of housing, there are individuals I know who are over the age of fifty-five who would not want to live in a neighborhood of only people over the age of fifty-five and actually choose to live in neighborhoods closer to their grandchildren. And so while I definitely think it's important to have that, I think if if neighborhoods like that are not renting, it's telling us that that's not what people are wanting at the moment. And I do, I do feel like they they looked at that, obviously. That was what they kind of proposed, which is why I also think that it would be nice if they do some advertising and promoting specifically to that age group to try to get that age group in there as well.
I mean, I think it's aesthetically pleasing. I mean, that's great to see. It's not just a quick throw-up apartment complex. So, I mean, I'm glad that it meets the the aesthetics of the Harmony corridor. I guess my biggest concern, regardless of age, is what things cost these days for a one-bedroom to be seventeen hundred. Starting point, five years from now, that'll be over two grand. I mean, I don't care what age you are, but for for a rental of that is but your cost of building. So I get it. And I think to Luke's points, I think to all of our points, I mean, just being cautious on, you know, being able to provide, you know, that wide scope for those that are fifty-five or, you know, young professionals or whatever it may be. You know, and and the less transient, the better, right? I mean, trying to create a community that establishes long-term rentals versus people coming and going all the time will create more of a community than it will just a transient atmosphere, which is what we're wanting. So I mean, overall, I think it's a great project, just those those pieces.
Yeah. I mean, as the applicant pointed out, this is Class A space, so it's very high quality in terms of the design finishes, amenities that they're expecting to get there. I guess as someone who is over fifty-five, the the advantage, I think, for a really nice place like this is the fact you don't have to mow the grass. You don't have to repair things. And so it still offers some appealing attributes for for grandparents. And it is embedded in a multifamily, single-family neighborhood, which means you could live close to your grandkids and it could be very turnkey. It could even be someplace that you rented and maybe were here through the nice weather and went somewhere else when it was freezing outside. So the other thing I would point out to folks is that they got the density by right in two thousand and eighteen when the PD overlay was approved and they're meeting all of the criteria. The only change is really the the parking density. And one of the major concerns is by neighbors is overuse of street parking. And I think they will have more than adequate parking onsite. So for all of those reasons, I I will be voting to approve this.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Yeah. Ultimately, we are bound by the decisions of those that came before us. We're bound by the PD overlay that was approved in in two thousand and eighteen. And although there, you know, could be some discussion about I would prefer this type of housing versus that type of housing, ultimately, we need to compare it to the standard. The site plan that was previously approved, you know, was to build three large buildings up to forty feet. Based on the way that's measured, that hasn't changed. So, you know, I think we really need to look at the criteria and look at the changes that have been made. You know, some legitimate questions have been asked about the drainage and whether or not that's a concern. This is an area that ultimately we rely on the expertise of staff and the expertise of engineers that have said this will work. So I, you know, trust Director Stone and and his staff. So while that while that's a concern, I I think we've heard, and it makes sense, you know, why why this would work as an underground storage facility. Yeah, I think we can ask questions about the impact on parking. You know, ultimately, it's going to be a hundred cars. Will that be the the straw that breaks the camel's back at that intersection? I I don't know, but but it sounds like we have a good good plan in place to to deal with that. You know, questions about adverse impact on health and safety, I think are largely speculative. You know, the the chief expressed that that he didn't have have large concerns here. I really appreciate the point that Mayor Protem Wagner made about the comprehensive plan and and supporting a diversity of housing and and how we're losing a little bit of that there. When I look at the spirit of the comprehensive plan, a lot of times there's competing interests. On one hand, you know, we want to have things like a vibrant old town. We we want to have, you know, you know, some thriving commercial. We hear about restaurants and grocery stores and and some of getting those things here is about building that critical population density and and to get the population building that critical population density. And to get the population to attract those things, we need projects like this. You know, to have things like a walkable community, you need you need projects like this. But the flip side of that is, people love the open space feel of Timmouth, and projects like this, that kind of can can go against that. But but on balance, when we consider all the criteria, I believe that we would not be, we would not have a basis to deny this. And so maybe we would have preferred to see the 55 plus housing. I think that this is within the rules and and makes sense. So I will also vote in the affirmative. Any other commentary?
I would also like to say thank you to the developer for actually investing private money in a in a Class A multifamily facility. So thank you for that.
All right. So with that, the motion before council is to approve Resolution 59 Series 24, a resolution approving the trailside multifamily site plan. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Site plan passes 5-0. We will now move on to business item 6C, which is an executive session. Is there a motion at this time to move to executive session pursuant to section 2464024A to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest regarding town owned property?
So moved.
Do we have to read it?
Ask.
Carolyn, do we have to read the entire?
I can, I can read it. I've got it here unless you have it. Do you have it?
Lisa, do you want to read the this part where it says?
I don't. All I have is.
There you go.
She's got it.
So this isn't.
Somebody already read it.
I did.
Yeah, you already read it.
I'm sorry.
I was like, what else?
I did it.
Yeah, he already read it.
Yeah.
Executive session pursuant to 2464024A.
My fault. Sorry, Lisa.
What else do I need to read?
Yeah.
To discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real or personal or other property interest regarding town owned property.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, all those in favor of moving to executive session as described, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It's unanimous. We will.
Ready to return to our general session. Okay, we are back in our regular council session. Council anything else for the record before we adjourn? All right, then we stand adjourned.